I'm calling to order a special meeting of the Board of Education on June 17, 2014. Roll call and verification of quorum, please.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Ebel.
Here.
Ms. Faxon.
Here.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Here.
Mr. Presley.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Sherrick.
Here.
Ms. Totten.
Here.
Eight board members are present, we have a quorum.
We need the approval of agenda, the one thing we need to say before we get there, the only open session item is the superintendent search. Speaking with legal counsel, we can have public comments, no one has signed up, but I'm going to explain it anyway, just for the sake of those who are watching online. In a meeting like this, as long as we can have public comments by consensus of the Board, it's not a decision that I was allowed to make, or that like I and Jeff could, it needed to be consensus of the Board. That's why I didn't put it on as public comments, but we can have public comments by agreement of the Board, only of the one topic listed. So whatever was listed on here, in terms of an open session topic, that's what people can talk about. So if someone had signed up, they could speak about the superintendent search tonight, for instance.
President, I didn't know that you could sign up, I'd sign up for that.
Oh, you can read, that's no problem.
I didn't.
I have no problem with that. So you'd like to speak? Let me get a consensus, we just need a consensus of the Board, if public comments are going to be admitted, okay? No one has a problem with it, let's approve the agenda, and then Reed, you're up. So I need a move to approve the agenda, please.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda, and with an additional comment that we allow public comment. With an addition up that we allow public comment.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
I know there was other things that were supposed to be on the agenda tonight, can I ask for explanation why?
Yes. The form that needed to be filed, in order to call a special meeting, we have to have a piece of paper, a literal piece of paper with five signatures on it. When our attorney requested a copy of that, it was not available. So I sent emails to the people that were involved, and just said, it's, you know, they're out of town, unfortunately, we didn't have access to Internet. What we did do is put it on the June 23 agenda, for closed session to discuss, or for information. I know that it's confusing in that we have not always followed this policy, but because our attorney has found it two places in our policy, in a state statute that say, "A piece of paper has to be signed and filed before we can hold a special meeting," he is being insistent upon it. If we want to adjust that, we need to not suspend, but change our policy. Otherwise, his advice is that we make sure there is a piece of paper signed by a majority, which in our case is five people. That's why they're not on.
I believe, if I may make a comment, that I mentioned that quite a long time ago, that just phone calls or emails did not constitute what our policy said, is that you have to have a written...
I'll be honest, I had no idea.
Okay. No, I don't think...
So I did.
People thought, but I know that it's legitimate.
And if I may add, I think some of this confusion lands on me being clerk. Well, I looked at the state statute, and the state statute is really clear that you need to have five, it doesn't say a piece of paper, but five consent, or something like that, or majority, rather, of consent. And I had received an email from Lisa, I didn't follow through on that, I didn't know. She actually sent me an email saying I should contact Amy. I didn't follow through on that, because I wasn't quite sure what to do. And I didn't, actually, it wasn't that I wasn't quite sure, it's that I didn't know I was supposed to do something other than contact Amy, which, I did do that, but anyway. So I feel badly, because I think that I'm part of the confusion, but...
Well, it's been done differently. My advice, and people can do whatever they want, but if you can't get Amy, the Board President can find out the information we need on something like that, she can, you know, go by what we knew. I would always go and just ask, where do I go, what do I need to do, especially as a new Board member. I used her Board President a lot, especially the first year, not to give me the, not, you should, but you could, you're seeing your options, it's very helpful, because she has access to, you know...
I was going to say, I'm not oozing with wisdom, but I can find out, typically.
Trish, just to clarify, did you say that, what you read, it's not required by the statute?
No, it is required. A majority of Board members.
I thought you heard the opposite.
No.
You didn't say, you didn't say that it had to be in paper format, you said it needed to be in consent.
Right, you didn't say signatures.
You know what, I could look it up again and read it to you, but...
And also, I do believe that the Board policy overrides that. If our policy says that, it overrides it unless it's illegal.
Nope, the state overrides, it says right here, whenever these policies are in conflict with state or federal laws, the law shall take precedence.
Okay.
Oh, but it's a statute, not a law.
It's...
Right, it's a statute, but...
You can be more specific than your state law, and that's fine, but you can't be more lenient than your state law.
Correct.
So it's really our decision, but if we could agree what we want to do, in the case of calling a special meeting, I would love to agree on it, so from this point on, it's always handled exactly the same way.
I think that's a great idea.
If we say five emails are adequate, then five emails are adequate. That's not our legal counsel's advice, but he did say we have the right to decide that, so.
How is it handled?
It's been handled all over the Board, basically.
Okay, so all forms are acceptable, because that's past common practice. So this meeting should be taking place tonight?
Past practices is we only had the five emails, all as long as I've been on the Board.
Right, which we also didn't have, there were not five emails submitted either.
There were.
There were four emails and one phone call, there were five. No, this isn't, there were five.
We can discuss them another day.
Yes.
Okay.
But then, put it on the...
It is a part of the agenda, because we're trying to approve the items.
No, it's not part of the agenda, I was just trying to give an explanation to a question. However, we do need to make a black and white decision on this, so that I don't cause people frustration in the future, and people understand what we're doing.
And I think part of the frustration comes also in the timeliness of stuff, things have to come to Board members sooner than at the last minute, because, you know, some of us work full-time, out of town, in town, whatever, so there needs to be ample notice.
Do we have a motion in a second?
We have a motion in a second. Yep.
All right, roll call vote, please. This is for the accepting of the agenda with the addendum, that public comments will be allowed.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Mr. Presley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Reed, you are up.
First of all, excuse my appearance, I've been working all day, and I've been so confused regarding this agenda, I didn't know if there was going to be a meeting, I didn't know what the agenda was going to be. I came yesterday, and superintendent tells me he's not part of this anymore, so he doesn't know what's going on. This was about four o'clock in the afternoon, so I didn't...
I'm sorry about the confusion.
Yeah, you know, and then, but it was troubling that he takes this opinion now that he's not responsible...
Wait, hang on Reed, I need you to stick to the superintendent's position.
Yeah, right, well, this is all about this agenda, okay, but apparently, you're talking about a superintendent, which, let me emphasize that, first of all, you don't have, we don't have to have a superintendent in schools, but state law, okay? You don't have to have one, I guarantee you that, I've proven it. So when you go into your little closed sessions and talking about it, you don't have to have one, and I think you'd probably be better off, perhaps, without one, and just, you can take advice from the administrators you have. And the other problem that you have, that I see, number one, you get rid of this silly notion that he's your only, that whoever, your superintendent is your only employee, all of these people should be your employee. What I think, I believe you're confusing, we're not, Stevens Point is not a first-class city, the only one is Milwaukee. And in a first-class city, in a first-class school district, superintendent does have specific powers, to hire or fire, that's by state statute. And it appears that somehow you've given this superintendent similar powers that a first-class city has, where he's, he has all these powers to do all these things. And you'll never get, you'll never get honest advice from administrators when they know that he can be fired if they don't do what the superintendent wants. So you've got to come to some kind of consensus. This Board is not called dysfunctional because of me, you know, not any one Board member. I think, I think we know, the public has a pretty good grasp, in the newspaper or whatever, of what's a problem here, and it appears that the superintendent in the school is the problem, and I believe it's because you give them too much authority. So when you go into your little discussion, think about that. First of all, you save yourself a lot of money, but you've got to set forth what duties one would have. You know, apparently Greg Neon has a license to be a superintendent, but I wouldn't make him a superintendent, I would just take his advice. If you want to keep going around, keep him for advice.
Please don't name people by name.
Well...
It's one of the things we're not allowed to do, sorry.
Well, but these are, well, the administrators, you know, what do you call them? You know, these are people that are the ones that give you advice. Keep them in their capacity, you don't have to pay them all these exorbitant fees, but then they answer to you. And let all the employees know that they answer to the Board, and that by state statutes, if you read them, that's what the law is. And then you could take control of the problems you had the other time with this lady from the, you know, crying up here from the Transit Department and that, otherwise superintendent, you know, that's what I'm saying, when you go into it. And if you don't believe me about the superintendent in the school, please call the state, the DPI attorney, he will tell you, you don't have to have a superintendent, okay? So I just want you to know that, and change that, and I think maybe life would be a big improvement throughout the whole district, if you didn't have one person calling all the shots and having all this authority. Thank you.
Okay. With that, that's the intro to what we're talking about tonight. As of June 30, 2015, our superintendent has resigned his position, and we need to decide what we're going to do about that, if we are going to find a new superintendent, if we are going to look internally, if we are going to look externally, if we are going to hire a firm, if we're just going to discuss it as a Board. I'm just going to ask you, per legal counsel, please do not mention anyone's name in the conversation we're having, and open, you can talk about the search in any way. Also, please do not talk about the superintendent's position, not the current superintendent. So the position of superintendent, we need to talk about, we need to talk about what we're going to do to fill it, but not the current superintendent, or what's going on with any of that, let's stick to where we're going. So I am, let's just have a good conversation about it, I'm up for whatever people's ideas are.
Angel?
Yep.
If we were to have a superintendent replace the current one, I can see personally that there was a commitment to the community of at least 10 years, showing that there's a heart and love for the community, that they were here because of things that were taking place beforehand, and that they will remain here afterwards.
Yep, Jeff?
I believe that we should get an outside consulting firm to do a search for us.
Does anybody remember how much we paid for last time?
A little under $20,000.
That's the number I've been given.
But if we do do that, we have to take their recommendation. From my understanding, we did not take the last consulting's recommendation in the final superintendent search.
Does a consulting firm just bring people forward, or did they do the interviewing? I wasn't here.
Yes.
So both, so they bring candidates and they do the weeding process kind of thing?
They do what we asked them to do, but I believe that's what happened last time, they brought the candidates, they gave us the listing, they weeded through them, they gave us the top five or 10, and then they shortened the list down after we looked at them, and we threw some out also, and then they gave us their recommendations, the Board gave us the recommendations that they wanted to see in there, and I don't want to, I don't want to spend $20,000 if we're not going to take their recommendation again.
Does anyone know if there is a process that is similar to that, but it's a service that's provided, is the only way to do it through a consulting firm? Does WSB?
Yes, they do it.
WSB has that.
WSB.
For free, is there, it's not free? Okay.
The fee is less than...
And they've used them in the past here, haven't they? Yeah.
Chris and Jeff, you guys have been through repeated...
I think Mike can help you, there are all kinds of, I mean, there are, they can put it out in all kinds of searches, WSB has them, but there's all other areas, different, that superintendents look for, for jobs, and they can be, you can have them be local, you can have them be US, you can have them be whatever you want, they can tell you what the specifications are. The final decision is up to the Board, I mean, they can give us, they can filter through whoever we want, we can ask for certain things, you can ask for, you know, you want to make sure that they have their superintendent's license, or they're working on it, we've had both. So there's all kinds of criteria that you would work with the search firm, and they would give you all the information you need, and they have, it's kind of like a plate, and you get to choose, you know, what kind of things do you want in there, what, you know, this is what, this much cost, you know, whatever, so. And Mike can give you some of that, WSB we've used a couple times. I have to tell you that, no, I'm not going to tell you that, nevermind. Won't help us, if it doesn't help us.
Yep.
I just, when I look at all the cuts that needed to be made after the last referendum didn't pass, one of the things was that we were going to cut back on our administrative staff, which has not been done. And based on that, with the amount of directors and administrative staff that this district has, I believe Reed's point is valid, that, you know, maybe instead of having our directors go through a superintendent and filter the information to us, that we can hold them to a higher level and have them report directly to the Board. So I really think that maybe we, as a Board, can consider the organization of this district.
Alex has something. Yep, Alex.
I don't know if that's been done in the past, but this would be the time to try it, versus having another superintendent and being stuck in a similar situation.
Is anybody aware of a situation where there is not a superintendent, and the directors report directly to the Board, is anybody in?
I know there's superintendents in the state that play dual roles, so they, you know, hold other director positions in addition to it, or principalship, or whatever administrative roles, and essentially, what would be, we would be doing, would be doing that exact same thing, except there would be multiple.
Yep, go ahead, Kim.
There's a lot of school districts that don't have all of the directors, their superintendent does it all. So their superintendent's doing six jobs, where these guys are only doing their job, and they're directing to here. I mean, I would be interested in trying it, and if it doesn't work, we could always do a search after that. I mean, our directors, they're supposed to be experts in their field, and so let's make them prove it.
Chris?
I don't believe there's any district as large as ours that does not have a superintendent. And if you look at some of the larger districts in the state, and I have, administratively, we have fewer than many of them. There are people, if you look at, I don't know if it's DC Everest, or Wasaw, I believe someone like in Greg's position, they may have two or three different people doing that in special education. I mean, it's all over the Board, but you have to realize, when you say that, when you're talking about a small district, like 1,000, or 1,500, or 2,000, way different. I think at this point in time, if you look at what we are looking at as a district and as a Board, what's coming up with the Consolidated Task Force, to put directors and put that much information and that much responsibility on those people, on those key players, to go forward, I don't think it'll do, serve our district well. There's a reason people have superintendents, there's a reason that people have CEOs, and I'm not willing to support something that says, "We're going to take a chance and see how it works at this point," because what's at risk is the success of our students and our schools, and I don't think that's worth it. I am concerned about the search, I'm very concerned, because I think, I think what's gone on in the last year, good, bad, nobody's fault, whatever, people are not real excited about jumping forward to do this, and I've already talked to, it wasn't here, and it was way back, a couple people that I ran into at a WSB thing, who were search consultants, and to be really honest, the words were, "Good luck." So I just think we do need somebody professional who knows our district, we have a wonderful district, and I'm not willing to just take a chance that we can put a tremendous amount of more responsibility on people to hold this district together. Because what I've been told, over the years, is there's a concern about the Board of Education, and it's not this Board only, it's other Boards. This will be the fifth superintendent in 12 years that we've had to hire, or I've been on the Board and had to hire, that says something. You can blame all the superintendents if you want, but I think we need to do this, and I think we need to do it right. I mean, I'm willing to do any amount of work to do that, but I think it's for our kids, and for what we're going through right now with the Consolidated Task Force, the buildings, the grounds, the staff, I don't want to take a chance on that. So that's just my opinion.
Yes, Alex.
Chris made a really good point about the reputation that we have with the good luck, finding a decent superintendent. I'm not going to say anyone's good or bad, but if that is the consensus view of the community, or the school community, what kind of applicants are we going to be faced with? I don't want a superintendent in here that's just going to be here for a five-year, looking for the retirement package, I don't want that.
Can I ask a couple of kind of nuts and bolts questions?
Absolutely.
Kim, you talked about the advice that was given last time, and whether we followed it or not, I don't know, I don't remember. I remember I was on one of the committees, that, one of the public committees, but I guess what I'm wondering is, is in a nutshell, what do you mean, we didn't follow the advice? And then the other part of that is, are there documents, is there a package of documents, or something from when we went through this last time, that we can go back and look at and see, what were our goals last time, five years ago, four years ago, whatever it was? And what did we, what did we spell out that was important to us, and so forth? Somebody must have, there must be paperwork.
And I thought we asked for that to be here, but I, you know, I was going to say that too before, I thought we asked for the old search, but I will tell you in closed session, I will not say it here, because I believe it was closed session information, what you asked me.
Okay, okay. And do, were you on the Board when we went through the last, you were, okay, so was there some kind of a packet of information that you were given?
In what, about the people, or about what we were looking for?
Both.
Yes, yes. We went through, we nitpicked it all down, we said, "We want this, we want this, we want somebody that's going to be in the district for at least five to 10 years, that could, that's going to move into the district, that guaranteed would move into the district." There was a list of things, I want to say we put it down to like 10 or 14, something like that. So we had it, it's someplace.
It feels to me like somebody should be up on the Board, and we should be throwing out our priorities, but we're probably not to that point yet.
Right.
The other question I have is, how, when you say we wouldn't have a superintendent, how would the day-to-day functions of running the district, signing the checks, you know, making all the decisions, how do you envision that happening?
Well, actually, it would pretty much stay the way it is, in that we have a Director of Operations, so he makes sure that all the bills are paid, he does all of that. Our Director of HR makes sure all the contracts, all that kind of stuff is done, our buildings, grounds, so on and so forth. The way it operates now is each individual administrator is in charge of their area. They meet with the superintendent, and they, you know, do the roundtable kind of stuff, but essentially, they're responsible for all their areas. So what it would be is, they would maintain their sole role, instead of the collaboration with the superintendent, they would collaborate with the Board. The Board would actually need to fulfill their duties as statutory, statutorily required to manage the district, that, from my perspective, what has happened is, we have given the responsibility, our responsibility to the superintendent, which by statute, we're allowed to do, we're allowed to hire someone to run the district for us, to manage it. But what we get confused on is, the, you'll have the conflict saying that we are overstepping, we are micromanaging, versus macro-managing, versus, you know, that whole thing, you'll have people saying, you know, "We're stepping," when in the end, it is our responsibility. So what I'm saying is, instead of using those funds for additional administrator, where, like I said, we were supposed to be cutting back on the second tier of administrators, let's, as Kim said, let them be the experts in their field, let them be in charge of their area, and report directly to the Board.
Chris?
Can I ask a question, Lisa? So you want the Board to be responsible for running the operations of the district, those people would report to us, and who would pull together an example? So you have buildings and grounds, every time you make any kind of decision, buildings and grounds, curriculum, HR, whatever they are, okay, those things all come together in what I call the big picture. So here's this whole school district, if you do this here, it's going to affect this, 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 and this. You're saying that you want the Board of Education to pull all those things together, or have all those people decide how the district will operate?
Okay, I'll give you an analogy, just, that might help explain where I'm coming from. It's sort of like at the county level, where you have the county Board, and just recently, we have a county executive, executor, you know, Patty Dryer. We didn't have one before.
Yeah, we, actually, we did, Mark Maslowski.
Well, I meant before, I mean, in the last, what has it been, 10 years? But we've only had that position for a short period of time. So what I'm saying is, we would be the Board, just like the county Board. It's a different philosophy, do you need that extra position? When you have your Director of Health and Human Service, you have your Director of Finance, you have, you know, and they all are responsible for their areas. And what I'm saying is, why can't we do that here? Because the role of what the superintendent's responsible for not is...
Jeff?
On the county level, I mean, I can speak to that, just came from a county board meeting. I think it's important that you do have some type of executive, it brings cohesion to the organization, you know, like Patty Dryer, it was a different concept, you know, I understand that, before Patty and Mark Maslowski, there was no county executive, but really, that position in some form has brought a different perspective to the county level government, and a different kind of cohesion to where, it wasn't, you know, before, it was a lot of silo kind of thinking, you know, "This is my department, I'm on highway, this is my department, I'm in HR, this is my department, I'm in buildings and grounds," whereas that county executive is able to kind of break down those silos, and get more cooperation between those departments, first of all. They're not fighting for those dollars for HR, or for, it's, no, we're fighting for the county as a whole, as opposed to that individual silo. I think that would bring kind of a silo mentality to the school district, comparable budgets, they're both about $100 million. I think it's important that we have a superintendent in honesty, it would, it'd turn our jobs into a full-time job, in just managing the district in itself, or, back in that day, when you didn't have a county executive, it was the Board chairperson who ran essentially the day-to-day operations, so you would need, I mean, and you would have to compensate them for that position to run the day-to-day district. for that position to run the day-to-day district. I would rather have somebody who's licensed, somebody who can bring, break down those silos and move our district forward. So, I mean, tonight, in my eyes, I think we need to decide two things. Number one, whether or not we want a superintendent. But number two, whether or not we want to do a search or our own thing. I think those are the two major things that we need to decide tonight. Because on the subject of, you know, whether we do a search or we do it ourselves, I'd rather do a search because, you know what? There are great tools that they bring to the table. They have the opportunity and the time to do the things that we are looking for. They'll provide us with a survey. And, you know, we'll pretty much put our laundry list out there of what we want in a superintendent, you know, like Alex's, you know, the 10-year commitment to the district. Those kinds of traits that we want to look at, do we want a visionary? You want somebody just to run the day-to-day operations? What kind of individual do we want to run our district? And in honesty, that's the most important decision that we make as a board, other than our other duties, is getting that person within our district that can move us forward. It's money well spent, in my eyes, so.
Question?
Yes.
What do we do as a school district when the superintendent's not here in the office functioning? He's either sick or out of town for something or taking vacation. Do we actually shut down the schools? Because I don't remember that ever happening.
No.
Sets up a chain of command.
Yeah.
And that chain of command is basically the administrators?
Uh, yes.
So, it happens?
Yeah.
And we, is our workload increased when that happens?
But he is always in contact with the district, always with the cabinet. And with anything that happens, he is always, no matter where he is, he's always in contact. We've had things happen in the district. And I've asked, what's, he's either on the phone or by email, no matter when. And not only him, but any superintendent. It's their district. I mean, it's their job to be.
I'm just trying to state the fact that it is probably not necessary to duplicate the jobs that we're already paying for.
And last time, we did, we were without a superintendent for a little bit, weren't we? Yeah. Just let you know, Alex, when, before Attila was hired, we were with a superintendent and so.
Was it working?
We lost a lot of admin at the same time. You know, we lost the HR person.
But all the staff did step up. And yes, the district did not stop functioning.
Yeah, it didn't stop.
Our staff represents our district, that we have a great district. They step up.
They all stepped up, yes.
If I can just kind of couple, on a couple of comments that, or add to a couple of comments that Jeff made with regards to county government. You know, I don't actually answer to Patty Dryer. So, I have a different viewpoint than a lot of the other department heads at the county. But yet, what I see her doing is I see her projecting a vision and a plan. Like it or not, it's there. She's saying, "This is the direction I want the county to go. And these are the pieces and these are the things that are important." And really does bring departments together. And I think in cost savings, I know I personally have had a number of conversations with her where, you know, she had ideas about putting different parts of the court system together. Ultimately, it couldn't be done. But she had, I mean, she had the conversation. She started those conversations to have a couple of different departments work together to solve some problems. And I know she's done that in other departments because we've talked about it.
Parks and Highway.
Yeah, exactly. And I guess, you know, I think that we're kind of having two conversations. One conversation is about the nuts and bolts and functioning, the day-to-day functioning of the district. And, you know, signing the checks and dealing with the big hole in front of PJ Jacobs and, you know, whatever those issues are that come up that need to be dealt with on a day-to-day basis. But the other thing we're talking about is the vision. And where do we see ourselves 10 years from now? And I guess I get, I have a fear when I, thinking about the Consolidated Task Force and some of the other things that I know I campaigned on saying, I, you know, I want, I want to push the district forward. I want to do some exciting things with the district. And I can't, I don't, I don't feel like that will happen if we don't have somebody leading or at least having, you know, working with, having that vision, having that 10-year plan or maybe that five-year plan. I guess I would also add, I totally agree with Alex that it needs to be somebody that is invested in our community. We have had a revolving door of superintendents. And that, that's really important to me.
Angel, could I just piggyback on that? Years ago, before we had like, we had cabinet. We didn't have a management team and a leadership team way back. We had standalone schools. Our elementaries and junior highs operated pretty much like they operated on their own. And through the, through the superintendents, it's like, wait, 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 wait. You know, we are one school district. Our elementaries, we tried, they tried visionary to bring us together. There were a lot of examples, how they worked on different kinds of curriculum. And it was like everyone was a standalone school. Every principal, you know, they had their own rules and that. And it's like, you know what? We need to be bringing us all together. This board needs to know that when, when students have to go to this elementary or that elementary, that they're going to be guaranteed that they have pretty much the same education. I mean, I just think you absolutely need somebody to bring the district together cohesively with that vision. There's a reason that position exists. And for large school districts, I mean, just think about the last year or the last few months, think about just as an example, some of the closed session things. I mean, there are things going on. These are 7,500 students, 1,000 employees, all of these things that are going on. Who's orchestrating this? You know, even orchestras have somebody there to pull them together to make sure that it's all working together in what we want for a district. So, I think those are the two questions, though. Do we want a superintendent? And if we do, how do we want to proceed?
I thought of a few questions. I don't have answers. These are just the things that came to mind. So, in order to facilitate the discussion, I'll ask them. And you can answer them or not. First of all, what would the, if there was not a superintendent, what does the leadership team think of that? Do they feel like they want to run this district themselves? What do we do, for instance, like when Keith quit mid-year? What do we do to fill that position? That would leave a gaping hole if he was running his department. Like right now, our HR department is obviously struggling. What would we do in a situation like that? What would board members do on a daily basis if that were the case? And then the question that I think would happen is, would someone just take on that role just kind of by default? You know what I mean? Would there be a leader of the leaders that would take over it? Like, how do you set up the authority structure, that sort of thing? Who makes the final call? Those are the questions I was thinking of while people were talking. So, ignore or discuss amongst yourselves.
Well, your first question, it would be if the board decides not to replace a superintendent. I mean, we would, just like we put in on the rest of our staff to pick up the slack, our directors would have to pick up the slack or, and don't take this the wrong way, find a new job, just like our teachers had to. They weren't willing to put on the extra work. They would have to, and we would replace them. Would they leave a gaping hole? And not a gaping hole, there would be a position missing. I believe our staff underneath them knows their job usually better than, and I'm going to say this from my experience, not in the district, but I usually knew my job sometimes better than my boss. So, when I left, there was a hole or my coworkers took it up for me. So, that would be our decision on that, so.
I just want to point out, like Kim had mentioned earlier, when, when we got the, our latest superintendent, we had a lot of turnover. And there were a lot of holes in administrative positions for a while. And our staff did step up. So, that, if experience answers that question that you have, what would happen? It happened just not so long ago. And staff stood up and took care of it.
Another question, this is a, for instance, what if the, a superintendent, let's just say the one that we have, decides that he just wants to put his feet up? Then what happens? It falls to the administrators who are hired to do the jobs that they're doing. So, again, they're able to do it, they're doing it. They don't need that supervision. They don't need their hands held. They don't need to pull their departments, all different, the four, six, or whatever they are, together into one. They operate as separate entities.
I guess I would ask then the people who are suggesting this, what are you as an elected board member willing to invest? Because I think a lot more responsibility would land on the board in terms of hours spent and how many, I mean, we can't expect administration or whoever they are to only report to us once a month. I mean, we have to be available and ready. And if I need eight votes on something, I need it now. And I personally know that I don't think I could handle that with a family and a full-time job and what I have taking on that level.
Can you give me an example?
Day-to-day stuff, it comes in, it, do you have?
Yeah, the, earlier this year was the school closing. He got in Clement Weather. Do we call a school off or not? Who's going to make that call?
Transportation. Transportation used to make it. They'd take it again. I mean, that's where, I mean, it's like, that's why I need examples because like that one, it's already been, you know, shown that transportation can do it. And who actually, better than transportation to call?
And even, those recommendations come from the county, the sheriff's department, whether or not the roads are in good condition or not. So, I think we can make a sound decision by that as well.
Possibly. But as I recall, there were some issues regarding the way it was done. So, it's not just whether or not you close them, but also how it was done.
Well, the issue is worth not following the policy, plain and simple. If the Director of Transportation knows the policy and follows the policies, there would be no issues. But if you want to throw another thing, it's a sinking hole at PJ's. You know, who called the shots? Well, maintenance would be, Director of Maintenance, you know, so.
So, that's why I'm trying to, I mean, what's an example of something that would actually not be able to be handled by a director?
I think we probably grossly underestimate what happens on a daily basis in terms of what flows through here, the phone ringing, the questions that are answered, the things that are done. The couple of times, I mean, how have my president, you know, six minutes? But the couple of times Attila has been out of town, you know, the one time, he set up the chain of command for me. But, I mean, the people were pretty, whoa, deer in headlights with the daily events of what happened. It's, things happen. I mean, we're a huge district with tons of employees and we have big projects going on right now. We have the Consolidated Task Force. We have the compensation stuff going on. People have a lot of questions. And if something doesn't get answered, I mean, it would almost be a thing of, so does the Director of HR then just have the final say on all HR things? I mean, that feels really heavy to me.
And I think part of the problem has.
That would be the board has the final say.
Exactly, the board does. What's happened from what I've been told is, the current leadership style is that the administrators have to ask for everything. Before they do anything, they ask. Well, if that leadership style changes and the board is the leader and we give them the power to make certain decisions to a certain level and then they bring them to the board, I believe their comfort level will increase where now they're afraid to make the wrong decision.
They're relying on a crutch.
Correct.
And we keep bringing up the Consolidated Task Force. Every administration, every director cabinet member is in there. They're there, they're talking about it. They know exactly what's going on. So, to have the, and as Attila said himself, superintendent said himself, he's not in the meetings. He walked in once. They know more what's going on in their meetings than he is. So, they could easily direct the change of that. Again, there's pros and cons to having a superintendent, not having a superintendent. And that's got to be our first decision, but.
I think, and I, please step in and correct me if I'm wrong. At the moment, based on the comments I'm hearing, we look like we have a 5-3 consensus on having a superintendent and not having one. Does every, would that be reflected correctly? I would say superintendent, 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 no, no, and no. Is that accurate?
I haven't decided on a no yet, but there's pros and cons to it.
I think we've had, I mean, we've had 45 minutes of the conversation of not having one. So, maybe we should move forward with the idea that we will pursue one. We don't have to. But let's at least discuss our strategy for what we would do if we're going to. Because the majority at the moment seems to be to hire a superintendent, yes.
If we do go with that idea, I would like to see hopefully someone internal. They might have a little bit more investment here, like more of a commitment because they've grown up here. I would like to say that. I know we tried it last time and I don't want to leave it out. But I would like to do that search first, so.
Before we spend money doing something extensive?
Well, I would, I would like that. And even if we do it as an interim in the overlapping of it, that would be a good learning tool. So, a thought, a thought.
Actually, another question, too, is, do we want to hire an interim before we hire a superintendent? And I, one of you, maybe you can tell me how you, I know Attila was an interim for a year first, and I don't know where that distinct you came from, if it's required.
Why don't we hire an interim that allows the administrators to work solely and intervene when they have to and see if that can work? Where the administration does control their parts of the district and does not have to rely on the superintendent. If they need to, we have this interim. Then we're not bound to having a superintendent under a contract for a certain amount of time that we're stuck with that ends up being maybe a lemon.
Angel, your question was, is we hired the superintendent now because he came in not for the full year? He finished out the year, correct, Chris? And that he was an interim and then we hired him after that?
So, did you make the choice that he was an interim? Or he had to come that way based on how it was?
No, we, we did two separate searches. There was a search for interim and then there was a search for a permanent.
Right. Is it, I'm sorry, I don't remember the circumstances. Is it because someone left abruptly? Or is it because you thought it was the best idea to have an interim first?
We, as a board, thought it was important to establish what we wanted in a superintendent, get the community involved, set up all these different folks. Yes.
So, if you wanted the time?
Yes, that's why, at the time.
And it was rather an abruptly being asked.
Yeah, I see, yeah. So, we are not required to hire an interim, but we can choose to? Okay.
The, oh, go ahead, Chris.
So, I think because it's June, we have time. I think it would be, this is just my opinion. I think it'd be a good idea to open avenues, internal, external, interim, whatever. But I think we should really have a broad-based search. And I think, I agree with Jeff, you know, you need a search firm to kind of pull it together. They, they know more questions to ask than we do. I mean, we can filter it down to, we want this, 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 and whatever. But they have much more. I mean, that's their job. Their resources are greater. We can say, you know, here's our ideal, whether it be interim or internal or whatever. They will, they can direct us into, well, here are things you can do. You know, you could, not you should, but you could do these things. And I think it gives us much more leeway if we have a professional and they're giving us those avenues to do. Because I think we want to be, and, you know, Alex, I understand your comment. We've had, in every superintendent's search, we want somebody who's going to be part of the community, who's going to stay here, who's going to invest here. I don't know anybody who comes in and says, "Well, we want you here for 10 years." It's an ideal, I mean, it's an ideal.
That's why I would want to try to pull someone against their will here. I'd like to see someone who's already here, who's like, this is my home.
I'm just saying, you know, superintendent's contracts don't go, you know, 10 years. You can say, "We want somebody who's invested in the community." And that, I mean, that's a one. But there's never going to be anything.
And just to lighten up the load, we could YouTube it. Because I ripped out a bathroom the other day and we YouTubeed everything. So, maybe we can YouTube it. So, just to get everybody laughing, I'm sorry.
Or Google it.
Everything's, everything's true on the internet.
I really think we should invest in a, a search firm. And then talk about, you know, what do we want to, what do we want it to open it up to?
But I would like to see the criteria, if someone can find it from what we brought up two years ago, three years ago. I have a feeling it's going to be the same thing. We just need to stick to it and stick to our guns. That's.
Gwen here or Bart?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
It's in the filing cabinet in there.
Cool.
But I like kind of Alex's idea about that. If we could possibly sometime at the beginning of next school year is saying, "Okay, directors, you know, we're looking at this. We want you to bring our ideas." Not saying that we're going to take his job away, but do what you can. You know, let's see if you can stand on your own. Just like when you push your kid out to college or whatever like that. See if you can, well, somewhat, somewhat to college. You know, see if you can make good decisions on your own.
Maybe that's a possibility that we have to consider Maybe that's a possibility that we have to consider, because that's the kind of employees we want. And if they can't do it, we find the one that's willing to come here that will do it for the great package, whatever, compensation that we're offering that they're receiving right now.
Any other thoughts? Okay, then, the one thing that has been alluded to or brought up once but hasn't been discussed a lot is an internal. I mean, I think at some point, all of us have said, we would love it if somebody that we know, that knows our district, that, you know, that, that we at least consider that avenue, which, if we decided the parameters, at least initially is free. So what I can tell you, hang on, let me just tell you what the attorney said about that. As long as we're fair to all the employees and follow the handbook, we could handle it however we choose to. So if we want to open it internally, we can do that anytime, as long as each person with the requisite licensure has the exact same opportunity. So we can't, we couldn't handpick, you know, okay, you three would want to apply, so we would just have to put it out there.
But the last time we posted it, either the last time or the time before, we had internal candidates. I mean, can I say a name of an internal that we had?
You can't, sorry.
That we had before?
No.
Okay. Well, we had more than one, okay, that I know of. So they were included in, I mean, it doesn't exclude anyone. You post it, anyone, and of course, internally, people are going to know you're looking for a superintendent, and as long as they have the licensure and all that, it's equal. Your outside people are equal. We can state whatever we want, but every candidate is allowed, internal and external.
So the firm does it just big, asks everything?
Yeah, yeah.
And does the firm do things like check the licensure, all that stuff?
They'll do whatever you, whatever in the package you get, tell them we want you to do.
So there are different degrees of what you can have them do. It doesn't have to be the $20,000.
And I also thought that if we wanted only to do an internal look, they would. I mean, we can, we can tell them what we want. If we say, we only want to do internal first, let's look at that first. Do we need a consultant at that time? You know, there's, it's their expertise, again, we're, we're going down to their expertise, you know, but we can break it down how we want. If we don't find somebody in here, okay, then let's look, I mean, most companies do that nowadays.
The other thing I would mention is, when you, when you talk about that interim, just remember, and you're talking about somebody internal or external, either one, you're saying, we'd like you to give up your job-
Right.
-and guarantee to your job for a possible, for an interim position, and we'll see, and I'm not saying that's not a good thing, I'm just saying, there's not going to be a guarantee, and most people, most superintendents who apply, you know, it's in the contract. I mean, they get a couple of years or whatever. So I think you have to be really, you know, understand all the ramifications. You have a director, whoever, let's just pick a position, and say, by the way, we'd like you to, you know, interview for this, and we have had that happen, where somebody interviewed for something, and as if they don't get it, they get to go back to their other position. So that's another consideration.
And so we've had that, yeah, so, that's what I was just going to say.
There's just a lot of-
So you can establish that boundary as well?
Yeah, because we've had that, we've had intrums before, and then we guaranteed that if they didn't want the position, or we didn't hire them, they got their old position back, so.
Lisa?
The other thing is with, with our contracts, whether you're a teacher and administrator, your contract is only for a certain period of time. And that's part of the profession, so you, you know that. And so, that being said, but the, the danger in the, the interim filling of that position is then you also have the issue of an unfair advantage seen from the, the interim being there, that they have that advantage. So, and a lot of times, well, what can happen is that your, what you need for interim is not what you need for long-term, and those boundaries get blurred, and you, so it just makes it very difficult. So I would, if you do an outside interim, I personally would very much caution you against that. There's, there's a lot of drawbacks on that.
All right. Any other thoughts, people want to share while we're in open, otherwise closed session? Well, actually, let me think. Do we want to talk about a timeline for when we want to have made a decision about what we're going to do? Do we want to set, I mean, that, we can do in open, that's not a closed session thing. Like, do we want to decide where we're going by August 1st? What, what is our, what is, I don't know how long it takes, even if you hire firms, so I'm up for-
I think we need to keep on this at least once a month until we, until we know where we're going. If we put this off, we're going to get too far behind in it.
Maybe we can research, search teams or search-
Consultants?
Consultants in that.
Research consultants.
Do some of that, just an idea.
And the, and the information that we brought two years ago, three years ago, whatever?
Yeah, can we get that for our next meeting?
I assume so. I don't know why, I mean, it would have to be in closed session because it's people's personal information, but I don't know why not. If it's a Cinefile, let's run it off.
What are you talking about the?
Or are you talking about consultant firms?
Whatever was prepared for the board last go-around, I'd like to see that. If that's a packet of information, if that's, whatever it is, I'd like to see that.
So are you, are you referring to what the board as a whole decided the priorities were, and the community decided the priorities? Because that's not closed session. Or are you referring to the candidates?
No, not the candidates.
Oh, okay.
I'm exactly what you're talking about, the priorities, the thought process.
That's what I thought, the criteria. I was confused when she brought up the full assault.
No, kind of the skeleton of how to do it.
The framework of-
And we even had like 10 questions. We even had questions, there was the, what we were looking for in their questions, that were all together in that little packet.
Okay. I know you're very good with files, so if we have a hard time finding it, can we contact you about looking for the, I just don't want to miss pieces because we wouldn't know what we're looking for? Okay. And right now, this is, yes, on the June 23rd, superintendent's search is on there. So, do you want us, as a board, do you want to direct us to consistently have it on the agenda, and then we can choose to not discuss it if there's nothing new to discuss, but let's, should we just permanently have it as an agenda item till we figure out what to do? Both open and closed, or just?
We should put a time limit, if it's going to be every single time we talk about it, because it can draw to two, three hours, and we don't get the rest.
Or do we want to do a special session once a month, once every other month, even if it only, I mean, we've only been here an hour. I don't think closed session's going to take very long, we're all going to be-
Why don't you put it on both, and if we don't have a discussion, we don't have to do it. But if there's criteria that we need to discuss, either open or, you know, here I need this information and this, we don't have to make it a, you know, a huge measure of-
I think once we get those materials, that will help us sort of understand, yeah, organize where we're going, what the next steps are. So I, I would, I'd like to see it on every agenda from this point forward, but we may change that. But I think that the next, at the next meeting, once we get those materials, we'll, we'll have a better idea of what we want to do next.
I would think we would try, want to try to make some kind of decision, I would think, by September 1st, something. Search firm, criteria, whatever, shoot for it anyway. If we have to do it before or after, it's fine, but shoot for something.
Can you include those, that criteria information in this next board packet, so the public sees that, so that they have access to it?
If we can find it by then.
Yep. Otherwise, the next time, just so that the public doesn't have to make a request for it, and it's out there for them.
The other thing is, I've had two search firms semi-brochures, so we can just print those off. I mean, I'm sure they're the generic-
You can have them.
How large is that next agenda?
Yeah.
It's a monster.
I have it up right now.
Yeah. If it's a monster, I mean, it could be-
Let's just wait.
Let's just, yeah, just get it for information only, and then make us another session next month, because these meetings right now are going to be the biggest ones. Once we start getting into it, the discussion is going to be a little bit longer. So I'd say, give us the information so we can look at it, if we have brief questions, and then let's set up a meeting for, for July, the other next month.
Well, right now, we have-
We have a meeting scheduled, assuming that we had started committees for the first week of July, but we aren't starting committees in the first week of July, so we could take that date that everyone has blocked off and use it for this.
Except I think it's something weird like July 1st, isn't it?
7th.
No, because we pushed it, because there was-
Somebody wasn't available, Jeff wasn't available.
No, I-
No, I'm not.
It's a holiday.
And because the 7th isn't a, I mean, that's the first Monday.
Yeah, I'm not available.
Well, we already, though, we already have scheduled, it's not, obviously, it's not approved by the board, but to do the superintendent's review on the 8th. So we're already getting together. Do we want to add superintendent's search?
On the 8th?
Of July?
Is that a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
I won't be here.
You won't, okay.
I would rather not be here, it's my birthday.
You know what we'll do? We'll have Amy poll.
Yeah, just poll with Dave.
July's going to be ugly no matter what. It's got a holiday in it, and it's everybody's vacations.
I'd say, couldn't we just do it on the 7th, since that Monday, now we're not having committees like she was saying?
Jeff's not here, so I guess it would be up to him. Would that bother you?
I think just do a poll.
Yeah.
Yep, let's do a date poll.
Stop the discussion.
Yeah, okay. Excellent. Any other conversation we want to have in open? Okay, so, just to-
Again, just recap one more time, that this is an opportunity to do something that could work very well for our district, and if we go the route of just hiring a replacement superintendent, we are tying our hands. We can always give it a shot. It doesn't work in a month, we take the steps to hire the superintendent that is needed, if it is needed.